Those are the only two I don't have. Are we going to get more STRs?
Yes.
I don't have any.
I wanted a little resolve for the planning board before I continued onward, so next meeting hopefully, and then I, we can go back to having, you know, everybody just, we can commit to what we got going on.
Yeah, you know, that technique that that Ingrid taught me means that I can take your your Excel file and with just a few little tweaks, I can make it go right into the map.
It's amazing, right?
And even automate the colors.
That's awesome.
And compared to what I was doing before, which was one at a time, the way I do reading, you know, items for the meetings. I mean, items for the meetings, there's no other way to do it, but when you've got something like that, it's wonderful.
Right. Hi, James.
Hello, Melissa, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
I'm pretty good. Hello, Judith, hello, everybody.
Hi, James.
How's your foot?
It's okay, I just have a little leftover physical therapy and it'll be never as good as new, but pretty close.
We'll take it.
I'm walking and driving, that's all I care about.
Good, happy to hear.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, one more little task to do and I am done with this.
I'm gonna ask the phone number, six, seven, nine, eight, five, five, four, if you could just mute yourself, please, on the phone, we're getting your static.
So we're not on video? Where'd you turn it off?
Melissa, you can mute them if you're in the post. You don't wanna?
No, I'm going. Okay. All these things I'm learning, Judy.
Oh, yeah. To know, and then they change the thing a little bit and you have to learn something new.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Stuart here.
So.
Hi, Stuart, hi, John.
Good evening.
Brian, we can hear you.
He's muted.
No.
You can't.
Peter, we need you to unmute yourself. We can't hear you.
Unmute, there we go.
Perfect.
Okay, we'll start again. Hi, everybody, it is seven o'clock and I'd like to call to order the Woodstock Planning Board Regular Zoom Meeting of May 6, 2021. Melissa, do you have any updates to the agenda?
I do not.
Okay, we have the minutes from April 29th, if everybody's okay, could we just make a motion to accept them?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, under Communications and Announcements, we have the most letters in support of a case before us that I've ever seen, so I'm gonna deal with them when we get to the case. And then and then we also have an email from Attorney Sarr, which we'll get to when we get to that case. And also have an email regarding the Sumpes case, which is coming up. So we have three public hearings and two sketch plan reviews, and at the end, we have some motions to approve drafts and credits. So the first public hearing we have scheduled for 7:05, which is in one minute, is Michael Sumpes, which is Planning Board Case 19-1217, and the Woodstock Wetlands Water Course Permit Case 19-042. This is a public hearing for a minor subdivision application to create three lots from 60 acres and a Woodstock Wetlands and Water Course Permit required to cross some wetlands buffers located in the R3 zoning district at Chestnut Hill Road in Woodstock. Representative is Barry Medenbach. So I guess we got a couple of seconds, so I'd like to entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Linda? Hi. Um, so my phones are really messed up.
Do I have a second on opening here? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so first off, I would again like to thank the applicant for being so good as to save all the wetlands and the wildlife corridor on the property from development and reduced his application from five lots to three, three smaller lots of the big one that went through all the wetlands, so we're very thankful that that has been accomplished. We have obviously gone through the case and I'm gonna let, if Barry is here, yes, I see him,
Yeah, I'm here.
to present the final plan, which we just had one little change, which was to add a buffer zone to a separate area on the plan. All right, Barry, if you wanna show us what you got?
Sure, yeah, as a result of our last meeting, we moved the mitigation area to that area, I don't have a map to point to, but we moved it as requested and you know, made it at least as large as the disturbance, and I will point out that the disturbance we have is not in the wetland at all. It was just skirting the 100-foot buffer area and we're actually following the route of a wood road that's there now. If you get the subdivision up, we're coming in off of Chestnut Hill Road and through what is a woods road now, which skirts the buffers to between two wetlands, and then we get the road up out of the wetland and you know, and it's really the driveway for for two lots, but the first lot drops off in about 200 feet and the most of the driveways for the second lot that's up on the hill. So to mitigate that impact to that adjacent area, we we put it, we created a larger adjacent area to protect the the areas around the wetlands. Yeah, so if you, if you went to the other sheet, it shows a subdivision might have.
Subdivision map?
I'd have to go find, I'd have to find it on my computer. Do you have it, Barry?
Yes.
Melissa, you could, you could share, allow him to share screen.
I don't, I don't have it on mine, but Heather, Heather from my office is on. Are you logged in? So Heather can share, if she can share her screen, she can put it up.
Judy's just gotta unshare her screen. Thanks, Heather.
Hi, oh wait, I'm still.
Talk here, talk here.
Hi, I'm going to download these now.
I see your name and no face, thanks for the face.
I just, I just found them, if that's of any help.
Oh, I would probably be better if you put them up.
What are you saying?
Judy, it would be better if you could put them up.
Okay, what page am I looking at?
I think sheet two.
I think you're right. Yep.
There we go.
You guys are echoing in the office together.
Sure, sure. So are we good? I don't, the vocals are echoing here.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
One of you could mute Heather or use one mic, yeah, because you're close, right?
We fixed that, I'm sorry about that. So just for the benefit of the public, I'll explain the project. This Chestnut Hill Road there is kind of to the right, it's a little hard to see, maybe you can blow it up a little bit, but we're proposing three lots. Lot one will have direct access onto Chestnut Hill Road, you can kind of see that it's at the top of the drawing there, and it's a three, I'll tell you exactly, if I can read my map. It's a, it's a four-point yeah, lot one is 4.5.
3.85.
Yeah. You actually have an old map up.
Oh, is there another sheet?
Oh, yeah, this is all the lots, this is five lots, let's see. Heather, you got it, or you want me to dig?
Let me see if I downloaded, because yes, I do have it.
Heather has it.
Okay.
Thank you, guys, sorry.
It's all right.
So are you seeing my screen? I'm not sure.
I see you. At the bottom, hit the green share screen.
Okay, oh wait, let me get out it full screen. Share screen. And poof.
Not yet.
Okay, share.
There you go.
There you go.
There we go. All right, so maybe blow it up a bit.
Heather there, so we can see lot.
Right there. Yeah, there you go.
Come on, slide over, where's my sliders? Sorry, not feeling very.
Just moving a little slow here.
There should be some way to slide it.
Yeah, I'm
Some little hand or something.
Yeah, it's taking a little while for it to actually respond, okay, that's what's happening.
All right, let's, I guess leave it there. I guess most people can see it, but this is the three-lot subdivision. You could see the total acreage is 60 acres, and lot one, which has direct access from Chestnut Hill Road there, there we go. You can see Chest, Chestnut Hill Road, lot one has a house, it's right on the frontage of Chestnut Hill Road, and it has a driveway coming in directly off the town road, and then just below that, you have lot two, which is six and a half acres, and that'll have a common driveway coming in, and that driveway follows an old wood road that runs through the adjacent to the wetlands, and that first house will drop off at about 200 feet, maybe a little longer, maybe about 300 feet is where that drive enters that house, and then beyond that, there's the driveway for the third lot, which runs out through the edge of the wetland and then makes a turn and go up to the top of the hill. And there's some disturbance in that adjacent area there that that we're mitigating by creating additional mitigation area, which is actually not shown on this sheet right now, but it'll be between lot one and lot two, the boundary line between them that runs vertical on the map. It'll be that area there, it'll run up to Contour 620, which you can almost see, Heather's circling that there. So that's at the last meeting, we discussed that with the planning board, and they preferred to see that we put the mitigation in there. So there'll be no disturbance on any of those wetlands or the 100-foot adjacent area will be restricted areas. And as far as approval, we have the Highway Superintendent's approval for the driveways, we have the Health Department approval for water and sewer, and and there's really the only other agency's involved.
One thing, Barry, did we sort out the road maintenance agreement?
I, I haven't heard back from John Lyons, but my intent was this coming week, I'm going to get in touch with him. He had it and the lawyers were talking, and we just need clarification, but John initially said it looked like a normal ride driveway agreement.
Okay, so we can approve it pending that. Okay, so this is a public hearing, so are there any, sorry?
That's okay, I made it a condition on the resolution, which you guys will see later.
Right, okay. It's a public hearing, so are there any members from the public here with questions for Barry regarding this application? And did you get any written or calls, Melissa, regarding?
I believe there's Stephanie Sorbelini, and she's the only one that had some questions and comments, so if she's here, you could unmute yourself and speak, that would be great.
Well, I don't know if he's here, or she, I mean, but I did read it.
He's here.
Okay.
Hi, I'm here, I just couldn't unmute myself. Sorry.
Why don't you ask Barry your questions?
Um, so we just found out about this a few days ago, and so my questions are kind of general, just we live off of Whitney and we just didn't know if the land in back of us was gonna be cleared at all, because it's not in a wetland habitat. And just, you know, I don't, I don't even know if this, this question is allowed, but is there gonna be hunting access or a road down there in the future? Would, would there be plans to subdivide later?
Um, I can answer, there are, this would be the final subdivision, three lots, there'd be no further subdivision, and you wouldn't be able to hunt anywhere near these houses, so I would say, you know, there's no specific restriction from hunting. It wouldn't be allowed, because you can't hunt within 500 feet of a dwelling.
Okay, I wasn't even sure of the distance.
I can show you where, where Whitney is on, on the map that I've got.
Can I stop share?
Yeah. See, Whitney is over here.
Whitney is way below any of the houses, the new houses.
Yeah, this is Whitney here, and the developed part of this is, is like up here. And all the rest of it is gonna be remaining wild, it's wetlands.
We don't see that, Judy, do you have a map up?
Oh, yeah, wait a minute.
If you look at the map, sorry, this is Greg Sorbelini, her, Stephanie's husband. If you look at the map, you can see where it says upland on the bottom, where I believe off of, pull your map up, you'll see it says large thing, it says upland. That's where Whitney is.
No, what, Whitney's over here. And the property is being developed up here.
Okay.
Right, but where all those trees are?
That would not be. That's been left alone.
That's all we really were concerned about.
There, there's no construction proposed in that whole wooded area.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions regarding the application?
Um. I don't think so.
Okay, is there any other members from the public here for this application? Okay, well, then I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so.
Wait, I just wanna make sure everyone said aye, right?
Yes.
Yep.
I did.
Thank you.
And I'm reading Melissa's new cheat sheet, and she says, make a motion to approve the application pending draft resolution.
I will, so move, I'll make a formal motion at the planning board. Approve the application under Case Number 19-1217 and WWP Number 19-042, subject to the approval of a formal written resolution that's being drafted.
And the ROA, or the road maintenance agreement.
Yes, well, it's my understanding, Melissa said that
It's in there.
that's a condition being included in the draft resolution, yeah. I agree to that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
All right, Barry, thank you.
Brian votes nay.
Oh, okay, you got that?
Thank you, Brian.
Peter, does, did the resolution include both the subdivision and the wetlands?
It did, Barry, and they're gonna prove it before the meeting's over, and you guys will have it next week if all goes well.
Thank you very much. It was a pleasure.
Thank you.
They're here on for the next one.
Thanks, Barry. Yeah, don't go away.
Yeah, I'm not going away, I'll just mute myself in the interim.
Okay. The next case before us is the Bearsville Center, Special Use Number 21-0141E, and it's a public hearing for a site plan review application for a site plan modification of an existing site plan to expand the parking lot and make improvements, including entrance and lighting in the NC, which is the Neighborhood Commercial, and I emphasize Commercial, zoning district located at 277, 297 Tinker Street in Woodstock. And Barry, again, is the rep, and I just, before we open, or first of all, let's open the public hearing, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So before Barry gets going, I'd just like to say that the planning board members did a site visit, and they went through the checklist, and you know, the main concern was where the parking lots were, and they went over Barry's site plan and the checklist, and everything is in order. Then I'd also like to say that we've got the most letters in favor of a project in front of us that I've ever seen since I've been on the board. Too many to go through completely. I, I, I've copied at least 13, 14 of them, there's probably 20, but I do want.
30 total.
30. I do want to just briefly go through a couple of them. The first one is from Brian Cahill, and he says he's writing today in support of the application before you for the Bearsville Center. As Chairman of the Ulster County Legislature's Economic and Development Committee, I see firsthand the necessary, the necessary changes needed in how we approach in the entertainment industry in Ulster County. It is apparent that providing a safe, socially-distanced place will be required for any business to remain sustainable. I see the Colony Cafe has done a tremendous job utilizing their space to provide a safe, enjoyable, and appropriate gathering point. I believe that the Bearsville Center is proposing an even better plan for a similar business and including many upgrades to the property to make it even more enjoyable, safe space. I wholeheartedly support the effort to revitalize this important part of the history of Bearsville, Woodstock, and Ulster County. As soon as we are given the approval from the Chairman of the Legislature to gather in person again, I plan on holding a committee meeting at the Bearsville Center. I request that you please consider the proposal favorably, and that is from the Chairman of the Economic Development, Tourism, Housing, and Planning and Transit Committee, Ulster County Legislature. We also have a letter from Jael Linderman, and I'm just gonna just quote a few points here, he says he lives at 36 Wittenburg Road, within earshot of outdoor events, have lived here for 10 years. Quite frankly, if we'd wanted solitude, we would not have bought a property within walking distance of the Bearsville Center. Good point, I always say to folks who have issues like that, you know, if you buy a house next to an airport, please don't complain about the planes, you know, so it's, he says that he says that in my mind, having a vibrant music and restaurant in the nearby vicinity increases both property value and our quality of life. So that's from them. Then you have one from David Schneider saying, I live earshot to the theater, and I'm always happy to hear live music in this community. It is never very loud, and even if it was, I wouldn't mind. That is what this community is all about, and it's really sad that people complain about music when they should be complaining about other noises, etc. Then we have one from Nancy Kiernan. We live right down the street from the Bear Camp Cantina and have absolutely no problem with live music being played outside anytime. We are strongly supporters of the spirit of the music of Woodstock offers, please don't shut it down. Then we have one from Kimmit. It's a letter to support the amazing changes that have happened at the Bearsville Complex, the outdoor streaming events have been much appreciated. The venue will offer many opportunities for local musicians and artists in the future, and the town should be supportive of such efforts as for the owner and the team. And the last one I'll just bring up is from Barbara O'Brien, who of course, is Levon Helm Barn. She says, the purpose of the correspondence is to express my full and complete support of Lizzie Van's vision of the Bearsville Theater and property. This is exactly the shot in the arm that Woodstock needs, it's what put Woodstock on the map to begin with, music, art, theater, culture. It's exactly what Albert had envisioned, and those are just a few, as Melissa said, there's 30 of them, and I appreciate everybody writing in. So just want to say one more thing before I get to Barry. At the last meeting regarding this application, I made a a mistake where I, I like to put it a misspeak in which I said the applicant was in violation of the site, of the site plan, and we couldn't continue unless the violation was corrected. Let me be extremely clear to Liz, the applicant, and to the planning board members, and to any lawyers. Any issues to do with rights of way deed restrictions or easements, those are civil issues to be taken up with a civil court, and the planning board is not a court and cannot deal with civil issues. As far as violations, there are no violations on this site. The only way there can be a violation is if it comes from the Building Department or the Zoning Enforcement Officer, and there are none. So the planning board can proceed. And lastly, I want to say that if anybody has any issues with decisions made by the planning board, that you take them up with the Zoning Board of Appeals. So, given that, Barry, if you would like to get the map up on the screen, if someone can do that, and walk us through the final version of your plan.
Thank you, Peter.
So I think Heather is gonna put that up on her screen again.
Peter, I have some questions at some point.
Okay, certainly.
All right, so I'll just do an overview for people who, other than the planning board, who kind of know what we're doing. So this is the site, where we're dropping off on a little bit of the expanding parking lot, and you can see the buildings are in kind of that redded, hashed area, they're all existing buildings, we're not really building any new structures to speak of, with the exception of replacing the maintenance shed with a slightly bigger one, and then the dumpster enclosures, and then a small little chapel area that's over there, and then we're gonna reorganize the traffic through, through the property, we've met with the Department of Transportation, and they agreed that we should take the one entrance that's essential and make that our main entrance, where most of the traffic will come in, particularly for special events and that, and that the, the other entrance will be one-way enter-only to the west, and that other little area close to, what is the bridge there, is just a drop-off area for the restaurant. And then that darker shaded area with the parking is gonna be paid. And then that darker shaded area with the parking is gonna be paved. We're gonna pave the parking lot around there. Right now, I know people who visit here. You'll, during the rainy season, it could get quite muddy, so that'll clean that all up. And they're also gonna reduce some of the parking in that area where we show it is green. That is all parking now. We're gonna turn that into a lawn area just to make a nicer gathering area close to the buildings. And that'll have a little chapel which will just be used for small special events. And then the main parking lot will be, be reorganized a little bit. We're gonna be expanded up there. We're gonna add some new parking. And then also all the way up on, on the top of the map by the, by the highway, Heather bring the pointer up there. The new park, yeah, that's a new parking area and the area just directly below it, there's on either side of that yellow proposed maintenance building, that'll be new parking. And then down below, that's existing parking. And then we're adding some additional overflow parking that's just right off the map there. That's, that whole finger that sticks out there will all be new parking. And, and the, sure, go ahead. Lyle, so I have the, the owner Lizzie here with me, so if you would.
So I'd like to say that one of the things we've discovered in the last week is that we can make those parking spaces green spaces. In other words, we can install a matting either using blocks or using some kind of material that is resilient to cars traveling over it and then within the holes of that, we can plant grass, so, or, or other plants. So the idea here is that you don't see those parking spaces. Most of the time when they're not used, because they'll only be used for special events, they will be green and grass. We've seen this in Kingston and other places, so we are, we're still learning about this. We've spoken to Mr. Dalalovsky about it and others, and we're hopeful that although there is additional parking, it will not detract from the look of the place.
Thank you, Liz. So the goal here is that we provide. None of them, you know, back up or park along the highway. We want to get all the traffic off of there. The Department of Transportation is very happy with that. And, and we're also gonna put in new lighting. Right now, there's kind of a mismatch of lighting all around the place and that's all gonna be replaced with LED lighting that's directed, that has a very specific plan so that the light doesn't shed off the property and only illuminates the, the parking areas and the walkway paths that is necessary. And there'll be some additional landscaping, as Liz just indicated. You know, there'll be some grass area that, you know, will be mowed that could be the overflow parking area. So that's kind of a summary.
Okay, members of the board, have any questions?
I did have a, a couple of questions. When I was out there, I was told that the building department advised you not to do anything about handicapped access until after the site plan revision was approved. But I would think that showing where that was gonna be would be a good idea since questions, since I had questions about it. I know that the theater is very accessible except for the gravel right the foot of the ramp.
Yeah, well, we, we do, sure if I may respond, we do show all the handicapped parking.
No, I'm not talking about the parking, Barry.
Right. No, no. Yes, and, and we don't show the details. Actually, we do have some architectural plans that do have more details and we, we intend to make the buildings accessible. And certainly there are some improvements that will be done and we, we would expect that to be a condition, you know, that we provide that handicap accessibility. That's one of Liz's big things that she plans on doing.
I know it is. I was, I was simply trying to clarify for my own satisfaction whether that shouldn't be something that's part of the plans that you submit. And I don't know what the building department has said about that.
We can certainly add them. And in fact, they're on our plans for each of the buildings, the Bear Cantina and the Peterson House. They've, they have been added. They're just not shown on the site plan.
Yeah, yeah, they, they're on the building plans that they used for improvements to the buildings and that. And which may be in, in the building department. They have not been submitted to the planning board, but certainly that could be a condition that we provide all that detail.
Is the Little Bear possible or is it out of the question just because of the existing conditions?
The Little Bear is already on, it has a handicapped access bathroom. We rebuilt that last winter with, with the involvement of the planning, of the town inspector and it is, there is no stone, there's no steps to go up or down to get into the Little Bear.
And the, the walkways are gonna be paved enough to do that?
Yes, they will. In fact, I think they already are, but I'll, I'll just check that.
Yeah, it'll be all hard surfaces for the access for handicap.
Very good. By the way, I should say I think you're doing wonderful stuff. Liz knows that. I feel that way, but I, I want to specify.
Before I get to the public, is there any other members on the board right now have questions for Barry before? Okay, go ahead Stuart.
Peter, yes. I don't actually have a question for Barry, but I think we ought to note, since you referenced the many positive letters that came in and supported this application, there was also at least one email from a member of the public named Natalie Seer C Y R that, I believe it came in May fifth, that was sent around to the planning board members. And she was not in favor of the project and raised certain issues of importance to her. So I just think out of respect to everyone who submitted that that ought to be noted.
Okay, good point Stuart. I do want to respond to that because I did read her issues and I think I addressed all of those issues in those three options. That it's either a civil issue, that's the right of way to the grave. If there's a, any violation, that's planning board, and if there are further issues, it goes to the Z B A.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the board? You can always come back to the board. I just want to see if any other board members have big questions before we take it to the public. All right, so it's a public, what, sorry, someone said something?
I do not.
Okay, it's a public hearing, so are the members here in the public that want to address this particular application?
Yes.
Please.
Introduce yourself, please.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, I didn't know who it was.
Hi, my name is John O'Frank Denoff. I'm a new resident here in Woodstock. I lived on, in, on Tinker Street with an earshot of the events at the Bear and I am delighted to support the proposal. I share the sentiments of the letters you wrote in support.
Great. Any other members from the public have comment regarding this application?
Yes, I'm Samantha Taylor and I live in Bearsville and I just want to also endorse and thank Lizzie and the board for the support of the project and all the wonderful work that she's done and I just wanted to echo my vote of appreciation and support for the project.
Fantastic. Okay, any other members?
I believe there's one person that had some concerns. Is it John? Adam, I see you. This is Adam Peiser. He's a neighbor. Please talk to us.
All right, so I live at thirty-three Wittenberg Road. The property is owned by my wife Anna Croftchick. And we, you know, people describe being near the Bearsville Theater. We are really near the Bearsville Theater. You, you, if you're looking out, you know, you're sitting in the, I was sitting out there with Lizzie today who I had a great conversation with her and, you know, we can see the, we have a cottage out back in the property where we have a tenant living there. And it, you know, it's maybe seventy-five yards. I don't know. It's really close. So when people have concerns about noise, we really have had issues in the past. The prior owner was really, you know, not very easy, pleasant to deal with and we had to call the police many times. So, you know, there's music and then there's music. You know, there's eleven o'clock at night when you're trying to get your kids to sleep and, and there's, you know, doors are open and it's an indoor venue and, and music is blasting out. So I just took issue with the idea that when, I think Peter Claus said that, you know, if you live near an airport, you should expect planes. And I just want to say like, I really, I, I had, again, I had a great conversation with Lizzie. I'm not opposed to this. I, I really thought she had a great plan. I was pleased with everything she said. But, you know, I do think that there is potential for abuse since it has been abused in the past, although I don't expect that Lizzie will abuse it. I just want to point out that, you know, this is when we bought this property, when she bought, my wife bought the property eighteen or so years ago, that this was an indoor venue and indoor music and we would hear a little bit of music and that was fine. The prior owner abused that. It was outdoor music, very loud, indoor music with wind doors open. And I, I think that there, you know, that, that was not expected and that's not, was not anticipated and that, that this being an outdoor venue, if there's loud outdoor concerts, that that would not be something we would have anticipated when we bought the property. But the, the tasteful plans that Lizzie has, we're fine with at this point, but I just, I just want to point out that, you know, that there should be some care. You know, I, I do also think there should be, the, the noise law should be maybe revisited and made more clear. But a, again, in general, I'm okay with everything, but, but point out that there, I, we could have potential issues in that it's not fair to say that no one should have an issue with any music that's generated there, so.
Okay, Adam, very good point. I just would like to point out to you, Adam, and to all other neighbors around that, you know, Woodstock does have basic codes, disturbing the peace is a code, loud noise we have codes for. So there's general protection by town codes for folks being disturbed. So please understand you always have the right to voice your opinion if you are being disturbed and I'm sure that will be addressed.
Yeah, I could say something quickly. We, yeah, in the past, we had tried to do that. The police were completely not helpful in that regard. So I don't, you know, I, I didn't want to get involved. So that's a whole other issue. I, I, again, I, I don't really have any objection to any of the plans now, but just wanted to just put it out there that.
Great, Adam, thanks.
So, so Peter, Peter, can Liz just talk about that a little bit?
Sure, go ahead Liz.
He's had her sound engineer, the guy originally designed the theater out there.
So we are aware that our close neighbors, particularly to the west of us, are hearing the sound of music outside. And so we have invited John Storick, who was the original architect of the theater and in fact is an acoustic engineer, an acoustic architect, sorry, to visit us, and he can't get here before the fifteenth of May, to look at what we can do about that. We have three things that we are investigating. One is to use decibel meters that are very publicly obvious. So we've bought three large ones. One will be on the front of any, in front of any musicians. One will be on the side of the building and the other one will be in the middle of the yard area so that everybody can see that we are complying or if we're not complying, that we, we know we're not complying and we do something about it. That's one thing we are going to do. The other is we are going to move the stage from pointing down the creek. At the moment, I don't know if people know this, but Albert created a concrete bunker underneath the theater that we discovered when we were trying to build some trenches recently. And we uncovered it just because it was covered in grass and we've been using that to, as a stage. We're going to move from that area so that we're facing away from our neighbors. And we're also going to switch to only having acoustic music, so bluegrass music, singer-songwriters, no drums, no electric guitars or electric basses. And we believe that those three things will, will avoid any problems that have, we have had in the past. The other thing that we have done is we have canvassed all eighteen of our contiguous neighbors and asked them if they will form a group that we will have no input into that where they can converse with each other and if there are problems, they will nominate somebody to come and talk to us and we will resolve the problem. And there is a wonderful neighbor nearby who's agreed to take that on. I think she's on here tonight, so she may want to say something. But we've said if you can let us know as a group of concerns, then obviously we'll address everything immediately. And we will also use that group to let them know if we have construction work happening, for example, and it's likely to make a noise for a day or two, we can get out and let people know about that. So we're trying to do our absolute best to be good neighbors, but no intentions of being anything other than that.
Hi, Lizzie, it's Amy. I just wanted to weigh in to, to Adam's concerns as a neighbor who has proximity maybe different from some of the folks that have sent emails and, and, you know, overwhelming support. I want to say we are, as neighbors, overwhelmingly supportive as well, but we are in direct earshot of what happens at the theater. We're, we can see it from, from my kitchen. So I am the individual who Lizzie was talking about in forming kind of a neighbor coalition, if you will, to have an open dialogue with Lizzie about our concerns collectively, be it noise, be it lighting, you know, any kind of disturbances that would infringe upon our, you know, right to enjoy our property. And I have to say in the last two days, we've had the most, you know, enchanting and productive conversations about what's happening onsite at the Bearsville Theater. One of the reasons we bought our home was our proximity to the theater and, you know, we're super excited about everything that's happening there. But, you know, hoping we can move forward as a neighborhood and, you know, just be in touch and, and, you know, talk about things that might be impacting neighbors that, that other neighbors, you know, might not be as significantly impacted by. So hoping that we can, you know, enjoy the property as, as neighbors and also respectfully enjoy ours.
Amy, can you go and tell us your full name and where you live?
I'm Amy Colombo. I live at seven Wittenberg Road. So my backyard, a blut's Adams, actually. I think we, we see you in the driveway there. So when there's outdoor music, it's, you know, just projects straight across the, the stream. And, you know, during the pandemic, there were some jazz brunches, there was some acoustic, you know, amplified music recently. We've had those conversations with Lizzie and we feel confident that moving forward, if we can go with like an acoustic, you know, sort of situation over there, that we won't be nearly as impacted. But I'm hopeful that the communication will remain open and that we can, you know, be partners in Bearsville and, you know, be psyched to be able to walk to the complex and have a drink and enjoy the music and also be able to go in my pool and, and not have to hear it. So that's where we're at.
I am also a neighbor in Bearsville. Can you hear me?
Can you introduce yourself?
Hi. We also, we live across the street from Adam and so.
Can you please tell us your name, your full name and where you live, your address, please?
It's Maura Brady and I'm thirty-two Wittenberg Road with my partner Janine Perry.
Thank you.
And we love this neighborhood and we do appreciate what you all are doing at the Bearsville Center and all of the effort that you're doing. I think the biggest thing that we're seeing is that previously, this was an indoor venue. You know, obviously, the theater had amazing music and we could hear it once in a while. I think our biggest concern is the consistency of the music being Saturday, Sunday, every weekend throughout the summer, through the fall, and the winters where you'll probably have the heating lamps and whatnot. And that just creates a consistent music, you know, background to our property where we may want to sit and have peaceful environment, you know, nature and reading a book or whatnot. So I love what you guys are doing and I'm a big fan and Dave and I are neighbors too and we talk about music all the time. But it's the consistency and then the movie night and, and all of these other things that sort of pop up. So that's kind of where we come in and, and we're just concerned that we won't have peace of mind on the weekends when we want to relax. So we're just putting that out there as neighbors. We're not complaining or being negative, but I just wonder when we get a chance to just be in the backyard and not hear music, you know, what, I know you're trying to do the brunch and, and it just feels like maybe this turns into a circus that, you know, we're not prepared for. So respectfully, I'm just saying, the consistency is my problem, not so much that, I love music. We moved to Woodstock for that reason. So I, I just feel like where's the peace and quiet? So respectfully, that's just my opinion.
Okay. Melissa, do you have anybody else?
No, Adam, keep in touch with Amy so you can be on that neighbor board.
Okay, if there's no other questions from the public, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to say something as well.
Okay, go ahead.
Introduce yourself, please.
Yeah, I will, thank you. Shawna Kanter, thirteen Wittenberg Road.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, you know, we're two very much supportive and very happy that Lizzie is doing what she's doing. But it is, it is a major concern in terms of amplified music on the weekends outside. You know, and I think if it's acoustic, it's one thing, but amplification is a real problem. And I think as long as those doors are closed to the theater because she's put in the A C, there shouldn't be a problem. But, and there's also soundproofing today that could be put on certain walls. But, and there's also soundproofing today that could be put on certain walls inside. But, um, you know, outside stuff, wow, that's, that's going to be a problem. So that's, that's all I wanted to say. But we're in total support of what she's doing.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else before I close the public hearing?
And, and also, I just want to say that I know that there are other neighbors that feel similarly, and they're not on this meeting today. So I'd hate for anyone to think that, you know, it's as positive as you brought up in the initial part of the meeting.
Agreed.
All right, if there's no others, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Peter, this is Stuart.
Hi, Stuart.
Now, yes, I have a question of the last speaker, if she's still on.
Yes.
Yes, you're concerned about amplified music. I'm wondering how you define that, because.
Anything that's, anything that's used to amplify, and, and anything that's used with an amp, with an electric amp.
That would include a solo vocal performer as opposed to the guitars or other instruments?
Anything that's used with a microphone and an amp is amplified music.
And that's your concern?
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to just get the scope of it.
Yeah, 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 yeah. You're welcome.
Okay. All right, so I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now.
One more on my cheat sheet, approve the application. Stuart!
Well, um, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, before we get to that motion, um, I'm not one to, um, I don't necessarily want to put restrictions on, on the type of music, and I have a lot of faith in the applicant and what she's doing. I think that's, it's well based. But of course, modification of the site plan, and I don't even know if, if music or the volume of music or anything like that is, is within the purview of what's been referred to us. But the possibility remains that the applicant could somewhere down the line sell the property, and a new operator could come in and have a different philosophy. So I'm wondering, um, there has been some concern about use of amplified music outside at certain times, and I'm not insensitive to that. So I'm wondering if we ought to discuss it or just bring that up at another time? I don't know.
Well, I, I don't know that we have enough information to really go too in-depth for it, but for my personal opinion, as someone who is, uh, involved in this kind of stuff pretty regularly, I mean, to me, the concern shouldn't be whether the music is amplified or not. It's the decibel rating that she's already going above and beyond to catalog and, uh, scrutinize. So, you know, I, I, I won't get too into it, but I know people who train, who are trained opera singers who can go outside and sing louder than most small amplifiers can project. And, and where does that get you? So I think her going ahead and looking at the decibel value is a much more scientific approach to it. I don't think we should be in the business of litigating what type of performer and what type of artist can be at her establishment when we can, when, when she and the neighbors are opening a dialogue into what is a much more, uh, quantifiable, uh, measurement of the sound in general.
What about limiting the hours? How many hours a day will it be, you know, six hours?
There's a noise, or right now, there's a noise ordinance in town that I think is, that I think is perfectly suitable to answer and address all of those questions. The fact is, is, you know, there are hours of operation that cover both music and construction. You know, I live up in the mountains, and when my neighbor runs a chainsaw, you know, sometimes it's multiple day, every weekend on Sunday, and it can, it's not my favorite thing in the world, but it's within their rights to do. So, you know, I'm not saying that, I, I am not at all trying to, uh, indemnify the experience that I'm sure will be happening over at the Bearsville Theater or compare it to that of an active running chainsaw. But I think I am, I personally am very confident, given her proactive approach to not only communicating with the neighbors, but to going ahead and purchasing the equipment to monitor and, again, quantify the actual decibel value of what is going on at multiple points.
Yeah, but it's not only decibel, it's the consistency. It's every Saturday and Sunday from spring through, you know, brutal winter. So.
Can I say something? Maura, it's not, we don't intend for it to carry on. There will be some summer weekends, they're not every summer weekends, and it will stop in September.
Okay.
Up to Connor's point, good point, Connor. And, you know, it, I agree, it's a big difference if it's a blue chair and heavy metal or some nice music. And I also would like to point out that it is Woodstock. We have live music in the Village Green. We have live music at the Pizza Parlor. We have live music outside the Shoals whole place. So having live music outside is not new for Woodstock by any means.
Yeah, but previously it was indoor, so.
Are any of those?
But they're all outdoor, the ones I just said.
I know, but.
They've had outdoor music at the Bear for longer than the last owner as well. So this is not anything new. What is new, I, at least to my understanding, is the efforts that the applicant is going through to make sure that the burden of these events is not overly cumbersome. And I think either way, you know, we, we can respect her right to run an establishment, what we, again, qualified as a commercial district, while still facilitating an ongoing cordial discussion between contiguous neighbors. It's going to be an ongoing thing, uh, and it's not something. And like I said from the beginning of this, I don't want to ramble on, but I don't think we have enough information yet to even make a recommendation on what a reasonable decibel level is. I think you're going to go out there, you're going to have a couple of events, see what the response is, and make adjustments.
Absolutely, that is exactly what we're going to do, and we're going to make the decibel meters public. And we're going to do little experiments as well that, that show the decibels, where the music is originating from and at different other points where our neighbors live. So we are certainly going to be as scientific as we can about this.
Lizzie, I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt you. I, okay, Woodstock Town Code has a noise ordinance. They will be held to that. During COVID, things were a little bit different. The Z E O just messaged me. The zoning law does not allow outside amplified sound, except for now during COVID, but it's not going to last, so that's a temporary thing. But again, this is all under the noise ordinance with the zoning code, as Mr. Cross was stating, and it's within zoning, not really the planning board. Right, Peter?
Exactly.
I concur with Connor.
Thank you.
Something quick, a few things. I mean, there was just reference to those few places in town that play music. My understanding, those are in commercial districts, and that, and then this, the Bear property was referred to as a commercial district a moment ago, and I thought this was a residential commercial district, is that correct?
No.
Not a residential commercial district?
No.
Okay.
It's hamlet commercial, and the commercial part of it allows uses that are not normally found in residential.
Okay, so it's exactly, they can do exactly the same things as they could in a purely commercial district? Is that, is that right?
No, there's.
Neighborhood hamlet commercial has its own table in the use column, so a lot of the time, yes.
All right, and then just one, the, also, the mention that there had been outdoor events in the past. And I, you know, having lived here eighteen years, they were, there maybe were occasionally, they were infrequent, and I would imagine they would have had to get a special permit for that if they were doing it properly. I don't think if they were going to have amplified music in it, so it would have to be special events, you know, on it. Not, it wasn't every week, and.
I just, you know, I've been, I've been here for a while, a while now, and it was, there was, there used to be a weekly, I'll call it flea market, that would come to the Bearsville, where local vendors would come.
I remember.
Set up shop, and more often than not, you would see small groups. Usually, they were acoustic instruments, but they had small amplifiers. They would be, they would be, they would have microphones for their vocals to bring at level with their instruments. And, you know, it, as far as I was aware, as much as one could be, it was, it was a pretty peaceful experience. You know, I don't, I think, and again, you know, we, I don't want us to get hung up on, on arbitrating, you know, the, the comings and goings of the individual artists. You know, that should be within the rights of the establishment's owner to determine who comes here. Now, I agree with Peter, yes, there's a difference between heavy metal, and I don't know how effective a heavy metal performance would be in the woods with, you know, low, low volume. But the point being that I think what we need to do is keep the dialogue going between all of you. There's not much we can do to arbitrate it. And, and if I, and if I may, I don't mean to be pejorative, but the public hearing is closed. Like Peter said, we are not, we don't get to make judicious decisions on zoning law. We're not a civil body. So these things are going to be best borne out by discussing them amongst yourselves and with the owner.
Okay. All right, folks, we do have a lot of other cases to take care of.
Can Stuart now make the motion to approve the application?
Sure.
Can I ask one question of the board, just for clarification? Do you have a level where something is acceptable in terms of the deci, is it decibels? Is that the right? Do you have a level that's acceptable or not?
I believe there is something in the noise ordinance, but I don't have that in front of me.
Who has that? Because, I mean, it seems to me that.
It's public information. You can go on the town website and look it up in the zoning code.
Because we had a, we had a really good meeting with Lizzie today, and, and she, she said that it was very vague. And it would help us a lot if it wasn't vague.
Well, all right, but this is not in our purview.
You can refer it to the building department.
Well, that's the building department.
I've done these decimal tests before myself, and trucks going by ran right over the decimal level.
Not to mention motorcycles.
Right, right. You can hear the motorcycles up in the mountains here.
Right, yeah, so.
But that's inconsistent.
That's, yeah, that's a.
Not every weekend.
That's mixing oil and water, that's not helpful.
I don't know.
But, but we can't be helpful to you right now, unfortunately. I want, we're trying to, you need to go to, if you have, if you want clarity on that, you can go to the building department, and if ultimately, again, they're in violation, or you, or they, or you want to appeal a decision, that's the zoning board of appeals. But we're, we can't make any judicious decisions on these things, especially given that there's existing law that covers.
I think it would behoove all of us to know what the law is so that as a group, we could understand it and work it out.
And, and I think that's a great idea for this group that you guys have formed. But for us, the planning board, it's out of our purview. We can't help you with that.
All we're dealing with here, if you can hear me, all we're dealing with here is parking and the lighting and, and the entrances, and that's all that we can deal with.
Well, I think you kind of muddied the issue a little bit by reading the letters that addressed the noise and the support. That kind of led to what we were discussing.
I think.
Those are letters from the public. We have, we, it's important that the public be heard and what they have to say, but that doesn't mean we, that it's always within our purview. That doesn't mean that they should be ignored.
Let's get control of this meeting. We, we, Stuart, can you?
We close the public hearing.
Okay, we have a lot of cases to go on, so let's, please move ahead here.
All right, this is Stuart Lipton, vice chair. I just want to put in two cents on the last subject, the point of privilege. Any concerns people have about what is the proper, the legally, uh, legal threshold for decibel levels? I refer you to the Woodstock Town Noise Ordinance. You can get a copy from the town clerk and, or perhaps the building department has it, but you can certainly get it off the website or at the town clerk and then proceed from there. The fact that the applicant is going to give us empirical data available to the public of what the decibel levels are, that should give you a leg up on assessing whether it's complying with the ordinance or not, or whether the ordinance has to be revised. And if you want the ordinance to be revised, you should take that up with the town board. They're the legislative body of the town. We, we don't pass laws, we, we just review applications.
Can I come in here, please? This is the Z E O, Francis Hoffman.
I hear you. Peter?
Hi, George, I hear you, go ahead.
I, I just want to point out for this, that the, the area of amplified sound is under general standards, two sixty dash sixty-two I two. All activities employing amplified sound shall take place fully within the structure or structures. Three, structures shall be designed to contain sound fully within the structure. This may require the installation of sound dampening material and/or central air conditioning to permit the closing of windows in hot weather. It's in general standards, not in the sound ordinance.
Okay, great. Okay, thanks, Bush. Okay, we now have.
All right, Peter's got to finish. I mean, Stuart has to just continue with the motion, then we can move forward.
All right, so I'm going to make a motion that the planning board approve the, um, application made under SPR case number twenty-one dash zero one four one E for modification of the existing site plan to expand the parking lot and to make improvements, including entrance and lighting, um, at the premises. That's the motion.
So moved. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Whoever's sharing screen, they get out, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Barry.
Thank you, thank you all very much.
Thanks, Brian.
Okay, thank you. We now have another public hearing. Running quite a bit late. This is Margaret Dall and Whitmer PAC, SUP number twenty-one dash oh five eighty-eight. And this is a public hearing for a special use permit application to construct a family home to replace a recently demolished house located in the R five and scenic overlay districts in three oh one Atchill Road in Shady. And the reps are Michael Owen and George Cross. And I did a site, uh, visit and looked at the situation. I see everything was very clearly marked out, uh, where the new building's going and where, uh, everything is to be put, and everything looked in order. So this is a public hearing, so I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, are there any members from the public for this particular case? And Melissa, do you have any letters or calls regarding this?
Nope, nada.
Okay, then I would like you to make a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
So moved. Aye.
Aye. I, uh, didn't get a chance to jump in there.
Oh, sorry, Jack.
Aye, 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 aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Yes, um, I'm Peter Schwartz. I live at two nine six Hutchen Hill Road. And, um, I think, uh, you know, my understanding is, and I guess this is probably more a question for the board and probably a question I could have asked Melissa via email. But my understanding is that a special use permit is required here because of the, the requirements of the scenic overlay district, and that requires the, the planning board to make an assessment of, uh, the suitability of the, the proposal against the scenic overlay guidelines. Is that correct?
A hundred percent.
Okay. And, and the, uh, the, it's sort of the prominence and the cut and fill considerations are sort of the biggest considerations for the board, or?
The biggest considerations for us are glazing, which is to light the windows and that they don't reflect out over, uh, and disturb other people. Outdoor lighting has to be dark sky compliant. The roofs have to be non-reflective. As there's a palette of colors for siding and roofing that it has to comply with. And, uh, those are the main concerns in the scenic overlay. And there's no clearing to expose the building. And it, there's no clearing to expose the building to other, uh, structures or other, other, uh, places.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so I think we did close the public hearing, correct?
Yes, make a motion to approve application pending draft resolution.
George, I'll make a motion that the planning board approve the application under S U P number twenty-one dash oh five eight-eight. Marky Dahl Whitmers dash PAC, uh, for a special use permit as applied for.
So move on. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, we have some sketch plan reviews. We have, uh, lineman institute of the Northeast Inc., special use permit twenty-one dash zero three eighty-three. And this is a sketch plan review of a site plan review application for modification to an existing site plan to create an outdoor training facility in the R-eight zoning district located at seventeen hundred Sawkill Road in Woodstock. And the rep is Donald Liking. And I'd like to just point out, um, to everybody, this is the old Xena school is what we're talking about here at the property. So, uh, does the rep like to present, uh, what his plans are to the board?
Okay. Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm doing well. Okay, so we're the lineman institute of the Northeast. We're a trade school for eighteen and over adults. Um, so we teach them, um, how to become apprentice linemen and then get them careers in the power company world. Um, we're currently in Sawgardenes. We were established in twenty eighteen and we're looking to purchase the Xena Elementary School and turn it into our new facility, which consists of an outdoor training facility with poles.
Okay, questions from the board?
Do you want me to put the, uh, map up?
You could, sure, Judy. Um, it's a twenty-something acre property, um, which has the old, uh, school, of course, on it. And then the ballpark or the, uh, you know, the, um, soccer, soccer fields and ballpark. Uh, and then of course it's bordered by the Sawkill Creek on one side and the Sawkill Road on the other. Uh, on, on the east side is the city of Kingston Water. And, um, that's kind of where it is.
This is Brian. I have a question for the applicant.
Sure, go ahead.
Sir, did you say poles? Did I hear that correctly?
That is correct, poles, utility poles.
And can you elaborate on that, please?
We build, first we have a, uh, what we call our climbing circle. So we spend our first month learning how to climb. So they climb in the circle. Um, then the poles are removed and replaced. Um, and then we actually build a, a couple, three rows of poles approximately. We're approximately about a hundred and fifty foot by two hundred foot of, uh, ten to twelve poles in each row. So we, you know, the students learn how to set poles, right? Install a pole, frame a pole, run the wire, install transformers, um, hook up house services. Um, then we do three-phase commercial customers, um, some underground construction. They get their C D L through our school and that's, we do three classes a year of, once we move into the school, it'll be about forty-five students per class. Um, so they're four months apiece.
And just out of curiosity, so there's probably heavy equipment that, where you set those poles, right? So do you, go ahead.
Yeah, there, the poles down in the field won't be set with any heavy equipment.
Okay.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, so have you prepared a, uh, a, a sketch plan of your proposed site plan changes yet? Or is that coming up?
No, I thought this was my site plan.
We, we got, we got pictures.
Okay, so.
I can find them.
So at some point, we're going to need to see an actual, there you go, no?
Get rid of mine. Yeah. Sorry.
Digging.
How's that?
That's the wrong, uh-
That's not it.
Oh, let me turn off this, this chair. I may not have it.
This is awful, but yeah.
All right, well, this is just a sketch plan. We can, we can look at the plan.
It was email, but you all-
Your audio is breaking up.
What, Stuart?
Oh, your audio broke up for a minute, it froze.
Sorry.
It freezes.
Oh, oh no.
So are you saying we got this in the email?
Yes.
Don't, don't just-
Oh, I'm sorry.
So Melissa?
Yes.
Melissa, let me ask a question. Uh, have we got a recommendation from, uh, the Z E O regarding, uh, whether this, um, action is permissible in the zone?
Yes, uh, really, it's just create an outdoor training facility, installing utility poles, associated hardware and equipment, modifications to site plan to create an outdoor training facility. That's all the referral said, so yes, we're-
So it's a permitted activity, okay.
What about, excuse me, but what about the use of the building itself?
Uh, for us, we'll be using it as a school. That's correct, with classrooms and offices.
Have you done a survey of the interior of the building regarding things like asbestos?
We're, we're in the process of, of doing our inspections now. Uh, we're just waiting for our environmental to be completed.
I'm not, I'm not finding the, the email. I don't know which one it is. Do we need it or should I just forget about it?
I don't think we need it this minute. Uh, this is just the first sketch plan review.
Okay.
We'll certainly need it for a further one. Any other questions from the board though regarding, uh, the use of this, uh?
Yeah, Stuart here, I have a question. I, I'd like to hear the applicant give a more, a broader explanation of what the operation is going to look like. In other words, I heard him mention that they're going to be installing poles, but also are you also going to be teaching about the installation of poles? Is there going to be learned, are the students going to be learning how to, uh, install poles in the ground? And is that going to involve like ongoing teaching on how to excavate and do all that piece of it? I, I'm not really clear on the, the scope of your operation, so.
Okay, the, the, there, there are, there are trucks that are, that are used, that are taught, but down in the field, those poles will be set and, and they'll be dug and set by hand.
How many times?
Um, we, every class with, they're up temporarily, they're, we set them, they're up for about five weeks. We take them all down and then when the next class comes in, a month into the next class, we put more poles back up.
But then, then what's involved in putting the poles up? Is there more digging and equipment? I mean-
Well, they go back in the same hole, basically. Right, we're going to dig the hole once and use the same hole over and over and over again.
Yeah, and what kind of equipment is used in that?
Shovels.
So if I put the map up again, it'll be out in the field like this?
That's correct. Not, not the whole field, just a very small portion of the field. We're a very small school. Um, you know, we're, 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 like I said, we have forty-five students per class. So it's, you know, in the line, in the line school world, that's very tiny.
All right, so I'm assuming that the parking obviously is adequate for, uh, for what you're doing. We'll, we'll need to, uh, when you, when you do, when we do review the site plan, we just want to make sure the parking's adequate, which it certainly should be. It's a huge parking lot, but, um, I, you know, depending how many students you have at a time and how many teachers and so on, we make sure there's parking. Any other questions from the board members regarding this?
Yes, Pete, this is Stuart again, Peter. Um, um, sir, is your school, um, is your school a for-profit school or is it nonprofit entity? What's the status of your school?
Our status as of now is a for-profit school.
And is that your intention to remain?
That is correct.
Yeah, are you chartered in any way by the state, state education department or?
I'm licensed by the state education department, yes, I am.
But your, your school?
My school is licensed from the state of New York.
Okay.
It probably would be useful for that certification to be included in the packet when you actually apply. So we've got the whole picture. Um, how much of a building are you actually going to be using? Interior building, I mean.
Um, as of now, um, about ten thousand square feet.
And what's the total of the building?
Fifty thousand square feet.
So you may want to rent out parts of it for other purposes then?
I, I could easily have other purposes, yes. Um, you know, I really haven't wrapped my head around the whole building yet. I'm really just working on the first floor and the cafeteria area.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions from the board regarding this application?
Is the applicant tax exempt? As a school or not, do you know that?
I, I am not tax exempt, no.
In terms of property tax?
That is correct, yeah, you get my, you get your property tax.
I just want to know. It's not wing in terms of the application, I just want to have the full picture. Okay. All right, thank you.
But if the board doesn't have any other questions, I guess Melissa will schedule for a sec- second site plan review.
Peter, do, do you guys want to do a site visit and go out and meet with Don and see what he's saying? How about we get some site reps and go check it out and then we bring them back?
I myself have been in and out of that school many times. My kids used to play soccer there.
Okay, uh, whatever you guys-
But anybody else wants to take a look, uh, please feel free.
Um, I could be a site rep on this.
All right, sure, it's easy to get to.
Mm-hmm.
Um- Sound good, just go take a look, get a little bit more information and then we can bring them back and then schedule a public hearing.
So Melissa, I can coordinate through you to set it up with, uh, with the applicant so we can come to a, a time that's convenient for both of us.
Don, sound good?
Works for me, absolutely, thanks.
Any other member of the board want to, uh, review the site? Certainly can.
I'll go.
Nope.
Oh, great, James, all right. It's certainly easy to get around. All right, so once you guys take a look and then get back to Melissa, she'll schedule a, a second site plan. Um, it, I mean, unless you're changing anything drastic on the site and the existing site plan is probably going to be pretty adequate. You're not going to, you're not planning to change parking areas or anything, are you?
No, nothing with the school's going to change, just the outdoor training facility. I mean, I could probably, I could probably fit it in the gym if I had to.
I get you.
But you couldn't dig holes.
He did a very nice hand-drawn site plan, actually. Thanks, John, we'll, we'll work on it and get the extra stuff they want.
Can I ask one more question before we?
Sure, you bet.
Good night. Um, are you presently operating at, in Sawgardenes, did you say?
That is correct.
So there's actually an ongoing institute there with poles and all that?
That's correct.
What, and what's the address of that?
It's one Thompson's Road, the old, I think it's the old K T B building behind Big Lots. One two twelve there.
Okay.
Oh, I know it.
Okay.
I, I want to, I, I want to be very thankful to the lineman. My pole blew over in the last storm and crashed down and those linemen came out and put a new pole up and had me power going the same day. So keep teaching those guys, they're doing a great job.
Yes, and we have, we have a, you know, you can go on our Facebook page and our website and, you know, get pictures of what's going on, really.
What's the website?
It's the, the linemaninstitute.com, linemaninstitute.com.
Yeah.
And Facebook's the same.
And I bet I know what your, it's music is, right?
Yeah, lineman of the county, that's right.
Glenn Campbell, rest in peace.
Yes, that's right.
Yep.
Okay, great, well, we'll see you once more time and then, uh, should be pretty quick getting it passed for you. I don't see any issues.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
All right, thank you, everybody.
You bet, thank you. The next sketch plan review we have is for, uh, Alyssa and John Navarro, which is a special use permit twenty-one dash zero six zero seven, which is a sketch plan review of a special use permit application to install a ground-mounted solar array located in the R-five zoning district located at twenty Handy's Walk in Bearsville. And Anthony Scarry is, uh, the rep from Solar Farms. Um, I don't know if Judy has the, uh-
I do.
Have it on the map. It's up, uh, it's up off of, uh, by Guardian Mountain, on Guardian Mountain. Um, there it is, right off of McDaniel Road. Um, so why don't you tell us where the site, where the, uh, array is going to be located?
It's in the scenic overlay as you just-
In the scenic overlay. Is the, is the rep here? I'm sorry, I didn't, is Anthony?
Yes, Tate Lacy with New York State's Orph-
Oh, hi Tate. Okay, so, uh, um, can you just tell us, I see the house there. Can you tell us more or less where the, uh, panels are going in regard to the house?
Yep, more or less in the backyard, um, uh, just about, uh, um- Around here? Yep, just around there, yep. Cause that's obviously not wooded, whereas everything else, even though this was shot in the winter, you can see that the rest of it's wooded. Yep.
So do you have clearing to do, trees to take down to get this in?
There's a, a little bit of clearing to do, but there is some open space there.
Uh-huh. Okay, um, you know, it's a town policy to, uh, fast-track and approve solar projects. And one of the main questions everybody asks is, um, are they reflective? And I believe the answer is no, correct? The panels do not reflect?
They are generally not reflective.
Okay. Uh, and this is pole-mounted, correct, you said?
No, these are ground-mounted, so they're on racking.
Uh-huh. Okay. Um, well, board, uh, I'll ask the board, normally we just kind of, uh, we don't do further review on these, uh, solar panel, uh, installations. Um, if the board agrees, then I would say that it, we don't need further review.
I would agree with that.
Okay, uh, John, is that-
Agreed.
Agreed. All right, so then, uh, Stuart, why don't you go ahead and, uh, give us a, uh?
Okay, a motion, you want a good motion here?
Yeah.
I want a type one.
Okay, but before we do that, I just, uh, would ask a question of Peter. Is, is there any, uh, is there any potential public concern of neighbors with having an installation of this go- type going in? Or that would warrant the, a public hearing or, or not?
Not typically with the solar ground mount. Like Peter said, it's been kind of now fast-tracked. You guys will approve the resolution, they're held to it, they still do it through the building department, make sure they're within the zone and the code.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it, I just wanted to raise it.
Right, Peter?
Yeah, it's, uh, y- 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 you know, we, we fast-track them because going solar is a good thing for our, uh, our environment. Um, I admit that, uh, they're popping up everywhere. I got them right next door to me. Um, but that's, uh, that's the best we can do right now. So, uh, that's, it's better to, it's better that we, uh, that we do it.
And so I'll make a motion at the planning board, um, waive further review and, and approve this application as filed for modif- I'm sorry, to install, uh, a ground-mounted solar array located at the premises.
So move. Uh, all in favor?
All right.
Okay. There you go, another solar system going in.
I'll, I'll be in touch. We have to, I have to come up with a resolution that they'll approve next meeting, so it'll be a little bit of time, but you guys are, we're, we're, we're headed there.
Okay, very good, thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we have, uh, Butch waiting to give us a little information on S T Rs and we have, uh, Stuart to make some motions to approve the last three, uh, to approve the draft resolutions for the last week. So, um, what order should we do it? You want to first have, uh, approve these draft resolutions?
Are they already drafted?
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Yes, all of them, but you want, Butch is on, so why don't we let Butch talk and then we can wrap that up after if it's okay with you guys? Just because I don't waste more of his time.
Hi, Butch, wherever he is. There.
Eric, hold on. Eric.
All right, Butch, why don't you tell the board, um, what, uh, what the best path for us to take to, um, basically, so I'm understanding we've reached the cap for short-term rentals or non-occupied short-term rentals. Um, so, uh, at this point, I'd like to ask board members to ask which questions they have.
I would like to just ask regarding whether or not these run with the owner, the property? How are they terminated?
What do you mean by how are they terminated? If they have violations, they, three violations would make, would, uh, would require revocation or could require revocation of their, um, operating permit.
And if it changes property owner?
If, if it changes property owner-
If, if it changes property owner, under the law right now, a, the new owner has 30 days to apply for the, for transfer. If the transfer doesn't occur, then it is forfeited.
What about the, isn't there a special use permit? And I guess the, the underlying question is, it, does a special use permit run with the land such that, uh, if they sell the property, it's already permitted and all they have to do is, uh, get the operating permit?
Well, to my understanding, the special use permit goes with the property as it always has with everything else.
Yeah.
Um, that has been the standard behind it. The, um, the operating permit doesn't necessarily have to be granted just because the special use permit is there. Um, and a special use permit under the law can be revoked for the same scenarios of violations. So if there's, if somebody has multiple parties there that create, uh, loud music sound and they have three, the police have to go there on different occasion, three different occasions, and I get incident reports saying that they were there and had to tell them to turn down the music, that would constitute three violations.
Right, and that would give the building department the, uh, grounds to pull the operating permit.
Correct.
So who, who, if, 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 who, who has the authority to revoke a special use permit? Do you know? And I know it's kind of a legal question. You're not a lawyer, but.
Yeah, I might, we might have to bring that up with the town attorney as to if the special use permit has been granted, who can revoke it? Um, I would think that in the violations of the law, if I can, uh, if they have three documented violations and the law says that it can be revoked, then if, a- a- any type of a thing like that, I would think has to go to court.
I guess another, I'm sorry, go ahead, Stuart.
Well, I don't know the answers to these questions, but I'm good at asking questions. It seems, seems to me that maybe we ought to consider putting language in our, um, special use permit document that we issue for those that we approve, reserving the right to revoke the permit as a board upon such and such happening.
Can I make a point here?
Yeah.
It seems to me that the whole concept of a special use permit is to say this property as configured in this application is suitable for this kind of use.
Yeah.
And that's the argument that would allow it to travel with the land if the place was sold. That appropriateness for use isn't going to change. That's a problem with the way the law was written.
Yeah.
So my, my question is, can the planning board then issue a special use permit only to the present owner of the property?
That's the question.
I think that's a question that would have to go to the lawyers, not to me.
I agree with that.
Or the town board would have to amend the law to get a little more clarity on the subject.
Sure, by, by putting them in, by using the, uh, special use permit device, um, they've enshrined every application that's been approved. They'd enshrined it as a permanent feature of whatever neighborhood it's been approved in. And that, that's developing into a, a problem because some.
That is why I defined it the way I did.
Because some, I appreciate that, because some neighborhoods have more than others and hence, you know, there's a real impact in some neighborhoods and less of an impact in others. And so, I don't know.
I think that was the thought behind it was the impact that it could have on the neighborhood on getting the special use permit. Um,
But we have no basis.
When the board did this, to my understanding, they took into consideration what the bed and breakfast law already said. And they elaborated on it to, to include the short-term rentals. And there was already some special use permit, uh, wordage and, and regulation in the bed and breakfast law.
Yeah, yeah.
I just want to piggyback off of everyone. And I want you guys to know that Butch and I work together a lot for the short-term rentals, right Butch?
Yes, we do.
Communication. If he has a violation going on, he comes over to see where the, where the project, where the case is with, with us as the planning board, where they're at. When I have something, I run over to him and say, can we talk? This is what's going on. So we are aware and that, that whole 30-day thing, like we, we keep in contact about that. And then, you know, like it's null and void, but if it, if it, we don't get an extra in, then it's not filled. And right now, as it stands, we have roughly 50 applications left. We've approved them all. We have sent this resolution that I derived from the other ones. We just need to get through the last 50 cases. Will we see a few more? Possibly in the future, but right now, the cap has been met for everything, owner occupied, non-owner occupied.
What I am hoping, what I'm hoping.
Was I accurate?
Yes.
What I am hoping, and it's the reason that I started mapping this stuff, it's very clear to me that the board did not think about density when they passed the law. And if you look at the map, which Richard Pe- uh, Peppner has a copy of, but it's not complete yet because I don't have the data yet. What I have, what I have makes it very clear, working with Butch and working with, with Melissa, makes it very clear that the vast majority of them, A, are not owner occupied and B, are within a mile of downtown.
Well, I s- I will say right now, just from the list, it's, it is, if it's not 50/50, it is very close to 50/50 on owner occupied, non-owner occupied.
Well, I don't have the map done that way yet, but all I can tell you is what is in close to pa- to, to the hamlet so far that I have the data is mostly not owner occupied.
And, and we only see owner occupied if it's three bedrooms or more. So everything else has been issued an operating permit through Butch in the building depart. So that's why the majority of what we see is non-owner occupied.
Melissa and I are going to get the full list together.
And, and this map is going to be beautiful. And then we can say here to the, the short-term rental committee, this is what we have going on right now. And they're not accepting any more applications. It's, it's mute now. We just have to get through what we have.
All right. So I mean, the point that we're not gonna, we only got these left to do. We're not ever going to get any more is, is a good thing. The commandrum, the commandrum really is that the special use permit requires a public hearing. And the public hearing has to go before the planning board. And there's no sense in the public coming to the planning board to complain about anything because until they get their permit, it's useless to complain. After their permit's been given, then if they got complaints to the building department, that's the commandment we had, having public hearings.
Well, that's been the issue that bringing up is that a complaint doesn't necessarily make a violation. If I left, if I live next door to somebody that just doesn't like me and wants to complain about me to the building department every single day, it doesn't make it a violation. The violation has to be documented. Either by the police going there and saying that this, it was a sound issue or trespassing issue. Or if, uh, if I see that it's, that they have a two-bedroom, um, short-term rental and then they advertise it as a three or four or five bedroom, then that could be a violation. They're violating their operating permit. They're violating what they were told, you know, what allowed to do.
I get you.
But Peter?
Yeah, go ahead, Stuart.
Yeah, but you know, now that, you know, the, the, the public is becoming aware of density issues in certain neighborhoods, we have started to get some complaints by email to the planning board. Uh, in particular is one, I think from Nehir Street or someone over there was complaining, uh, that there were too many being approved in that, in that section. And, you know, that's the kind of, um, statement that would be ripe for a public hearing on a particular application if there's going to be another one put in that and, and so on. So I don't think we should like, uh, give a short shrift unless you Jesse you are, but we shouldn't minimize the importance of the public hearing.
I understand, but that, uh, there was nothing, um, no regulation given as to that. If 250 people came forward that were all in the Hamlet commercial area and they were the first ones to come, they, they would have all been right in the commercial Hamlet.
I understand that.
And if all of Nehir Street was Airbnb's, we couldn't do anything about it.
Right.
Under the current law.
And.
Yeah, if they were the first ones to come and, and get their operating permits, they would have been the ones there. There was nothing saying that we're only going to allow so many in each district.
So, but, could I ask, because part of the, the idea with this law was that at some point it could be revisited and maybe, what, what most people talk about is the cap being raised or lowered. But do you, maybe when the time comes, it's worth noting that maybe rather than raising or lowering the cap as maybe certain area, a certain, uh, applicants fall out of, uh, you know, they, their licenses become available or something, we give priority to other districts. Do you think that's possible, like something that'd be worth lobbying for?
Um, it, it's, that's possible. It's possible that they could, um, the town board has the ability to ma- to make the law, change the law and make it more stringent to add to the cap, to take away from the cap. And we basically have to follow what is given to us in a law or a regulation.
I'm not sure we can legally pick and choose neighborhoods, though.
No, I will, I'll take an example. What I just saw for the town of Hurley, I just read this today in theirs and their schedule of use permit doesn't allow for any non-owner occupied outside of the 28 corridor. The 28 corridor in Hurley is the only district that will allow non-owner occupied STRs. It's not permitted in any other, any other district.
So they did it through zoning, Butch?
They did do it through zoning. They did it in their law through the schedule of use as to what's allowed. So I'm guessing that their, their zoning officer in Hurley is going to have, uh, his hands full as he tries to go through and find, you know, how they're, how they're going to regulate it or what they're going to do. I don't know, but I just, I did just see that today in their schedule of use for that.
Can I show you the map as I currently have it?
Sure.
I, I just wanna, I just want to address two. I really diligently did this because we weren't having a public hearing and I know you guys got, and I tried to send them. I know you don't always look at it, but there's a letter that goes out to all the contiguous neighbors of these short-term rentals. I get phone calls, I get emails. Anything worthy of a complaint or a concern, Butch gets for their file in the building. I, I acknowledge it. I call, I talk to people. Um, that's taking place in the public hearing. Because we were so inundated with so many cases for this and they made the executive decision in place, I did what I could to make a public hearing and hear the public comment. And we built files around that, 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 the communication. So just so you guys know, like, it, it wasn't completely dismissed and all of the cases that we have are within the cap and have done everything to get. And again, we have about roughly 50 more to go.
How many?
50.
50. Okay, so that brings up the one other commandrum, which is when the town board passed the law for the short-term rentals, the, the non-occupied, that they had to have the special use permit. That opened the door to the planning board voting against it because it's a vote. And so what happens if the vote comes down and it's disapproved? If the, if the special use permit is not permitted? What happens then?
Well, again, I think that it's something that needs to be discussed with the lawyer so we can find out what it is. If, if the planning board, if the law has been set that they need a special use permit and what they're doing is within the scope of the law, I would think that you would have to approve the special use permit. Um, if, there, there's nothing in the law that says for the density of that area. There's nothing in the law that says, oh, it can't occur on, um, a one-way street or a dead-end street. Or, you know, anything like that. There's, there's nothing that specifically says anything as to, you know, they need to be spread out and only 10 are allowed in every one mile stretch. The, you know, whatever the case is, it's not there.
This is the Hamlet.
But what happens if we get a bunch of letters about an application that are very negative and the board says, no, we're not going to approve this special use permit?
I, I, this is what I'm saying is if there's, if there's underlying reason for, reason for you to disapprove the, the permit, um, then, then sure. I, I just don't know. I, I honestly, I just don't know what that is.
Right, it's, 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 as, as we brought up, I mean, we've already approved 100 of them and, uh,
Right. So now, if the person next door to him comes in after having his, you know, and they had their, their application in and such, and you say, well, no, the guy next door has one, so we're not going to approve yours. Well, for what reason?
Because it's.
What legal reason are you denying that one?
It's not in the language.
Peter, not in the language.
Not in the language.
I'm showing you the whole town. And what I showed you before, and I'll bring it back in, the purple is non-owner occupied. The bright green is owner occupied. The pink is bed and breakfasts and motels. And the brown is mixed use, but there aren't very many of those.
What's the pink again, Judy?
The pink is hotels and motels.
Okay, thank you.
But as Butch pointed out, there, there's nothing in the code that discusses location of.
Right, but Peter, this is Stuart. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Um, in any special permit use case under, I'm looking at the general standards under 26062, we're required to take into consideration the public health, safety and general welfare and the comfort and convenience of the public in general and that of the immediate neighborhood in particular.
And the character of the neighborhood.
Immediate neighborhood in particular. So it seems to me we have some authority and re- and responsibility to look at the impact, any, the potential impact on a particular neighborhood. Um, whether that translates into a no vote, I guess it's fact specific.
I don't disagree with that. And I think that's part of why they, they would have put it into the, um, the purview of the, yeah, the planning board and the special use permit use.
There's also a provision.
You can look at that and I would think deny that. But again, just certain things that, of course, we want to check with the lawyer. We don't get them.
Yeah, there's also a provision here that says the planning board can, may issue a special use permit for a limited period of time and may place specific conditions for its renewal thereafter. So, I mean, we do have some power to address this if we want to jump into that lake.
After we get through the remainder of these that, that fell under the cap, I don't, I don't think legally we can change what we've done with the first 100 applications to now with the next 50. They all fell within the cap. That's my concern. Planning board.
So, so my question to the board is, we have 50 more left to do. And if they are done while we're still on Zoom and not in the, in the, are we just going to bunch them together and, and sign off on them as a group and get done with it, get done with the last 50? Or are we going to look at case by case?
If you give me, if Melissa gives me the list and I map them, we'll at least have some basis for understanding the density question at the time we voted. At the moment, it's all been after the fact.
Right, I'm fine with grouping them together.
And I asked, um, uh, Stuart asked about people complaining recently. Is there a way to look to see if their neighborhoods are a, a part of that, of anybody who specifically complained? And if they aren't, then it's kind of moot because.
And again, I, I send contiguous neighbor letters to every single short-term rental applicant. I have a letter that goes out and if I get communication, it is forwarded to Butch.
And the last 50 that are still there don't have any letters?
I, I don't know. I mean, until they get the letter that there's the public hearing and you approve the resolution, you guys, this is how the process went. I drafted the resolutions. I prepared it all, hours and hours. I think Peter saw the stack of envelopes one night. Um, then I send you guys the first one. I give you the lump sum, we approve them. Then I get the mailing out within the next week. So the mailing is the applicant, all the contiguous neighbors. And then I get either the applicant to file through, finish with the. And then I get either the applicant to file through, finish with the, the conditions and then I get neighbor comment or not. And then I forward that to Butch when we process their SUP. They're literally stapled to the special use permit.
So they don't have, so the public doesn't have input until after we've approved it?
True, but that was what was done under the executive decision with waiving the public hearing.
I thought that was a waiver of the public hearing provided that, wasn't the public supposed to have an avenue in before the decision is made?
I think we waived the public hearing because what we realized was until they have three violations that are recorded, there's nothing that can be done to stop their permit. So having a public hearing was just, we just have to, without nothing, we could tell these people of them, make sure you call the police and file a proper complaint and then in a year's time, you can get rid of it. So.
We had so many cases, you guys were sick of hearing short-term rental cases.
I know.
Hey John?
First of all, let me say that I have absolutely no problem with the administrative abilities of both Melissa and the building department of, of, you know, Butch. That's not the issue. The issue goes back to the structure of the original law. Now, if what Stuart just read, that we can place conditions upon the special use permit and one of those conditions could be that it expires upon a transfer of that property.
Yes.
I would be satisfied.
Yeah.
I think that's a condition that you could put on there.
And that would satisfy certainly my concerns regarding the STRs as the law currently stands.
Because then the new owner has to reapply under the same terms as everybody else.
Yes, but I'm not talking about that 30-day provision.
No, no.
I'm talking about a permanent revocation upon transfer of the property.
Yep.
Now, planning board, would we be, I have no problem changing the resolution and adding that in there. But I don't know if we could do it with the remainder 50 under the cap right now because we already approved the 100 prior and now we have those 50. Well, I don't know.
I don't have a problem with it.
I don't either. We could ask an attorney, but.
I don't think we need to.
I don't think we need to either because it's not hurting the 100 that already got it.
No.
Well, let, let me say this too, if I can. The, the town board last May lowered the cap on the, the whole cap. And it was from, for non-owner occupied, went from 140 to 70. And at that time, they didn't, we, we didn't get notified in the building department. We continued to take applications. There was some miscommunication that happened. And they, and they decided that in the end, because people had gotten their applications in under the understanding that they were within the cap and it got there, that anybody that had gotten it in by November would be allowed the chance to continue and complete and get their application, which now would, and get their operating permit, which I believe led us to the fact of bringing it back up to that 140 non-owner occupied. Out of the 150 that Melissa talks about, I do believe 10 of those are owner occupied with an SUP. The, so we're, that takes us back to the 50/50 of owner occupied, non-owner occupied, 50% each way. Uh, it was on the understanding that if any of the non-owner occupied's were revoked, forfeited or given up in one way or another, that withdrawn, forfeited or revoked, that they would be offered to owner occupied as long as the cap, the, the total cap was still there.
Okay.
So then it wouldn't, it wouldn't go to, that one wouldn't go to a non-owner occupied. So even if they have the special use permit and they give it up or it's revoked, it'll go, it, it will go to another non-owner occupied.
But as, as the CEO who executes all of the zoning, are you okay with us as the planning board? The next 50-some cases, so we can get them out of the planning board office, if I put, instead of it saying SUP indefinitely, it will now say only to this owner. I will have, like, I'll change the wording.
I'm okay, I'm okay with that as a CEO because it's, I followed their direction on the SUP. So I, I don't think, I don't think that they're wrong in saying that.
Okay, planning board, I will change.
Oh, hold on, hold on.
Well, hold on, hold on, whoa, whoa, whoa.
I don't, I don't, I think you have to do it in a, stay in accordance with the language of, of the zoning ordinance. It doesn't talk about the identity owner. It gives us discretion to issue a permit for a limited period of time. So we can say for such a period of time as the applicant owns the property rather than.
Correct.
Okay.
You know, you have to be careful how it's drafted, that's all.
Yes, very careful.
The language, Melissa, is going to be important.
Okay.
I think Stuart needs to, Stuart needs to shape that language.
Stuart, you'll get me the law just so I can read it and then put it on the bottom?
Want me to tell you where it is right now?
Yes, please, give me the, if you don't have, if you have it.
I'm going to pull a Butch on you. It's 260, it's a article, it's 260-62, paragraph H. Take a look at it, you'll see it.
All right, perfect. I will, I will, we'll get them back on and we will put that on the SUP.
If you want, if you want to take a crack at drafting the language and email it to me before you, you know, finish your document, I'm glad to take a look at it.
Absolutely. I know exactly. On the special use permit, it says on the bottom, I'm going to get that off and replace it with the new one. It's, it's perfect. As long as we're all in agreeance so we can just get through these cases.
Well, you want to call the board? Is the board in agreement with this change?
All right.
The town board, I've had, I have had some conversation and with the, the committee for STRs and they were speaking about trying to weed out all non-owner occupied's over the next couple of years now. And I will state with that point that he, that Stuart just made with that paragraph H, the second part of that says, no, the investment of an applicant shall have no bearing on the issuance or renewal of a special use permit. So that being said, I guess that even though they paid for it and such, it can be taken away or changed at any given time.
Okay. Well, I want to thank Butch very much for taking the time to help us through this.
Yeah, thanks Butch.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Butch.
Butch, I also want to thank you for clarifying the, the noise ordinance item that you did clarify when we were talking about Bearsville. That was helpful to me and thanks.
You're, you're welcome.
All right, board, I guess we got some motions.
Good night.
Everybody's good. Stuart, good night. We're not, we're not there yet, guys.
No, no, I was saying the night to, to Butch.
To Butch.
Okay, good. Um, everybody's good. Stuart and I will go back and forth with wording. I'll work on that next week and then we'll get the next bunch out.
You want me to, do we need to make motions to approve these draft resolutions?
We do.
Please, please, please.
Anyone else want to jump in on this or you want me to do it?
Stuart, keep me on task.
I don't want to monopolize, you know.
You're really good at it.
We got to spread it around.
Let me just utilize you as chairman.
All right, I'm going to make a motion to approve draft resolutions as drafted on the following cases. One, Michael Sumpes, planning board number 19-1217 and WWP number 19-042. Two is Bearsville Center SPR number 21-0141E. Three is Margit Dahl Whitmer-Pac SUP number 21-0588. And that's the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we have a.
Approve credits for Judy.
All in favor of approving credits for Judy?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Can I just make a further comment? Hunter's still on the line? Connor, I want to thank you for weighing in on the Bearsville. I thought, I found your comments to be very helpful and especially the emphasis on the, you know, the empirical data that's going to come from their decibel device is going to be very helpful in, in handling any, you know, disputes or complaints that come on down the road. So I, I thought your points were well taken.
Stuart, just as, as an aside, many years ago, the then building inspector, Paul Schultes and I did an evening of decibel readings out because of the complaints we had from, I guess it was the watering trough. It wasn't the Bear's Cafe at the time. And as Peter said earlier, we had no problem with the music exceeding the decibel rating, even though all the neighbors were complaining about it. But the trucks and motorcycles pegged the meter every single time. So I'm just hoping these devices are more sophisticated. Of course, they are 30 years newer or 35 years newer, so.
Well, one of the, one of the points of that code or the law on noise is it, it, it talks about how long the decibels peaked. And when I was holding the meter, the trucks, it kept going by and it didn't, the time didn't stop. So the trucks were actually going, the, the idea of the code was, okay, if it's just a, if it's a lawnmower for 10 minutes, it's okay. It, rather than music for four hours. But when I was pulling the decibel lever, it never, never, it was pegged all the time from the traffic. So.
Yep.
Anyway.
Yeah.
All right, folks, if we've got nothing else, entertain a motion to adjourn unless, sorry, Judy.
I just want to remind you guys, we have a meeting next May 20th. I have a pretty jam-packed scheduled. We will not have a meeting. You and I are all off the beginning of June and then we will resume June 17th.
And I will not be here on the 20th because I'm launching my new book.
All right.
Congratulations. Okay, Peter, continue.
Okay. All right, entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you so much.
Have a good night, everybody.
See you in June, I guess.
See you.
Good night.
Bye.
I can't quit it. What's wrong?
Technology.
It won't stop. All right.